Wednesday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of Planning Board will pose risk to our health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the Planning Board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation: either a link to the virtual meeting via WebEx or a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials is made available via the township website or in the planning or zoning department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. So a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicants, witnesses are finished testifying, at which time the chair will ask the board for comment. Instructions for public input are as follows: for those members who are joining us via WebEx, press the raise hand button to use this feature, click on Participants in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open that participants' window. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon, you can click on that hand icon. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have an opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if you're on the WebEx, please press the lower hand button so we know that you don't want to speak again, and if calling in, please press star three again. And so with that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Oral Halk?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq is here on my phone. She'll be calling it. She was not able to get back in, so she's going to be on the phone just like Jen. Mahir?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Oh, sorry, Mustafa Mansour is not here. I've skipped over him. Robert Thomas?
Here.
Carol Schmidt?
Carol?
Here.
Oh, sorry, Sammy Shabon, I don't see, and Chairman Racini?
Here.
So we have no minutes tonight, so resolutions. So you recall at the last meeting, we provided a one-year extension to Viera PLN twenty dash zero 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 two, and this resolution is memorializing that, so I will make a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Hey Christine?
Wait, who made the first motion? Was that you?
Well, I did, but then Bob did. I don't care which one of us you put down, and then Ted seconded.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Racini?
Yes. So we have no discussion items, so I guess we go right into general public comment. So I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public for any comment, general planning comment.
Seconded.
All in favor?
All right.
So we can open the meeting to the public. Christine, if you are here for Hamilton Street Management LLC, which is our only hearing tonight, PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 eight, that will have its own public opening, so if you wish to speak on that, wait until we hear that application. If you wish to speak on anything else, that's for this time.
Okay, Mike, I'm scanning the attendee list, and the only people on the attendee list are the people coming to the hearing, and Jennifer Ragnar. So that's it.
I'm honored to be joined by Wonder Woman. I wonder who that is. It's pretty, pretty cool. Okay, so basically, no, no, no public comment, so I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Seconded.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so hearings is Hamilton Street Management LLC, PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 eight, so we'll hear that now.
Hey Mike, all of the people that are for that hearing I have added over. You should start seeing them appearing and be able to hear them shortly.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes ma'am.
We can.
Yes, yes we can.
Good evening, Sheri, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for listening to our application tonight. We are here to request a request to, oh, kids, well, request relief from a condition. My name is Sheri Orunberg Rujiri. I'm with the law firm of Francis P. Linus, and I'm representing the applicant, Hamilton Management LLC. As I started to say, we are requesting relief from Resolution PL fifteen dash zero 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 one seven that was adopted by the Planning Board on June two thousand sixteen. Now, if you look at the agenda, the application before you, though, is PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 eight. Okay. Let me explain this condition. Condition three A two from the resolution from two thousand, it has the fifteen fifteen dash zero 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 one seven, is it states medical uses at the subject property shall not be permitted to operate on Saturday and Sunday. As you may be aware, this property is in the Hamilton Street Business District. The board granted preliminary and final site plan for a four-story mixed-use structure in two thousand sixteen. There is twenty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-five square feet of commercial space and sixty-one units on the upper floor. At the time of the approval, no parking variance was requested or required. That will be important later. I have tonight three witnesses. I have owner Manu Kakar, and he will testify first. He's at the site, so he can tell you the current site conditions. I have a real estate broker, Joseph Wayne, who'll explain his marketing efforts. And last but definitely not least is Vincent Dominic, and he will speak about the, what do you call it? The HBD zoning district, Hamilton Business District, and what the purposes are, and it obviously has a long history of a vision for the municipality.
So Sheri, if I could make sure, maybe try to simplify this a little bit. So this is kind of what I'm interested, I don't think we'll need to hear from a real estate broker. It's almost neither here nor there. I'm interested in hearing from your first witness because I want to hear about current conditions. Based on the TRC reports and things, and I think this is what Vince will address, is the TRC was agnostic as to how they felt about this. The Hamilton Street Advisory Board supported the weekend hours as long as the testimony from the applicant supports appropriate parking being available during said weekend hours. So I want to hear most about that. Then what the board needs to consider somewhat, as we heard from Jim Clarkin's little course at our work session, you know, are we, are we setting a precedent for the Hamilton Street Business District that, you know, we shouldn't set? Can we, can we regard this as its own unique use and application that doesn't open the door to? Because I assume the reason weekend hours were prohibited from this type of development were to give the residents, you know, the weekend without a lot of commercial activity. So I want to make sure, you know, we're not, we're not doing something that, you know, maybe, maybe should be done through the ordinance and not through, you know, an application. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I would lean towards taking the advice of the Hamilton Street Advisory Board because they're, they're boots on the ground. So maybe if we go, you know, five minutes for your first witness, just to tell us what the state of things are and all that, and then we'll go to Vince, and if we need the real estate broker for any other questions, we can, we can swear them in. Does that sound okay?
Perfect. I just also wanted to add a comment is that one of the issues that came up is the definition of medical use is so broad that it includes physical therapy. And so that was, you know, how I would distinguish this situation from other people trying to come in for relief from a condition such as this. But let me call forth Manu Kakar. Let's see, I'm looking for him on the, on the screen.
I see him. Mr. Kakar, can you unmute yourself, please? Leave please.
We had our practice.
I have no doubt.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in now. Ah, there you go. And we can see you as well, so we're good to go.
If you could raise your right hand for me.
Sure.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you state your name, spell your last name, and, and give us your address for the record, please?
Sure. Manu, M-A-N-U. Last name is K-A-K-A-R. My home address is six Carnegie Street, Monroe, New Jersey.
Perfect. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. So go ahead, Sheri, and so if, if, if Mr. Kakar could just let us know how he's, you know, related. Obviously, he's not, not a planned, not an expert witness, so that's the, but just how he's related to the project. Sure. So I'm, I'm one of the owners of the project, and I'm also the pharmacist in charge at Township Pharmacy, which is located in the building. Okay, great.
And also you manage the property?
Right. So I'm, I'm, I'm in the property seven, pretty much seven days a week, like, from at least about ten hours a day. Okay.
And how many years have you worked in this position?
As a pharmacist, I've been a pharmacist for about twenty, over twenty years.
Okay, but this for?
And the building, I wish the building was built about three years now.
Okay. Yeah, Hamilton Street Management. And you did work across the street when the pharmacy was located there?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you work on Saturday and Sunday?
All during Sat-, all during weekends, yes.
And have you ever had any issues with parking?
No, never did.
At any point, did you take pictures of the current site conditions?
Right, worked for the application back in March. Yes, I did.
And I just wanted to show the aerial photograph. Hopefully, I'll be able to share it. Where's Christine? My share is not, shared content is not up.
So we, I, if you, if you are able to share it, I just want to let Peter know that the aerial photograph is in the TRC report, so the board does have it. But we can, we can still mark it if you want, I'd defer you on that.
We do not need to mark it if it's part of our packet.
Okay, Sheri, UCP presenter now.
Okay. Hopefully. And it is not there.
So we do, like I said, we, we do have a copy, Sheri, of the, of a, of a, of smaller aerial photo on page two of the, of the TRC report. It, it, I don't know whether it's as good as what you were going to show or whatever, but if you want to use that as a reference, we can at least all see it.
Yes, I do want to use it as a reference.
Do you want me to see if I can share it, Sheri, from my end?
Please. I wanted to use the asp, that one is available to share, but not the one that I want right now, so.
We had photographs showing vehicles in the parking lot in our packet.
Yeah, but Ted, she wants the public to be able to see. They don't see what's in the packet. That's what. Give me one second, I'm bringing it up.
So there are sixty-one residential units on the site. But the commercial space really that we're talking about tonight is there's sixteen thousand four hundred eighty-five square feet of commercial space that's available for leasing that is vacant. Right now, all the only commercial tenants are the Township Pharmacy for four thousand square feet and the Hair Salon for fifteen hundred square feet.
Just to let you know, I'm seeing a blank screen.
Yes.
But that's okay. I mean, so.
Is it because of the hose that can't be presented?
So while we, while we work on the technical thing, maybe, maybe we can do without it. So, so the, the use you're asking, the medical use you're asking for this exemption for, or this change for, is the pharmacy?
No.
All right. So why don't you tell me what, exactly what it's for? It's not for the Hair Salon, we know that, so medical use. So Manu, if you could maybe let us know. A medical use would be a doctor's office, a, a, a physical therapy. Okay. So that's. And those are the only, are those, those are the only two uses in this building that you're looking for this for? Well, you know, any medical, like, you know, like, doctor's office, ph- physical therapy, occupational therapy, like a speech therapist, and urgent, a dentist, and urgent care. Okay, but what's in there, what's in, what's, what's in there right now? Are you asking for all these uses as a potential future? Yes, sir. Okay, so you're saying you basically don't, you're not necessarily looking for something that you know is there, or a tenant that you know is coming, but any medical use that may be coming in the future? Right. We had a physical therapy, they want to rent a four thousand square feet, but then find out that they cannot be open on weekends, they backed out. And I, I have prospective doctors who are in the neighborhood, they want to come in. The only reason they won't sign a lease with us because of Saturday, Sunday issue. Okay. I mean, I don't, I don't think I've ever found a doctor to practice on Saturdays and Sundays, so if you find something like that, let me know. Okay, I mean, that urgent care, physical therapy, I can see, so, okay. So I think, I think we're getting somewhere now. So you want something that allows you to do that in the future? Yes. That will only apply to medical uses. Okay. I think I'm getting this now, because it's a little unclear from the TRC report exactly, exactly what you're looking for. Okay, so. It's okay. I'd like to, I'd like to keep Manu sworn in, obviously, and, and then maybe bring in Vince, because I'm pretty sure Vince can give us the background necessary to talk about some of the things that Manu just alluded to in terms of, of being able to occupy that space. Obviously, we don't want to vacate, and I think Vince, as the, as the business development coordinator for Franklin can clearly tell us, and, and as a former planning and zoning officer, and I'm not asking you to testify in that regard, you know, what, what you might think in terms of, you know, the Hamilton Street Business District and, and various other things. So if we could get Vince sworn in.
I'm here.
Hey Vince.
Are you all ready, sir? Sticking in again for a third or fourth meeting in a row.
Just like old times.
Yep.
Mr. Dominic, is your right hand raised?
Yes, it is.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please?
Vincent Dominic, V-I-N-C-E-F-D, Dominek, D-O-M-I-N-A-C-H. My office is at four seventy-five Demont Lane, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, do you, do you just want to give, you want to let me give you a very brief synopsis so we don't take up too much time? Is that what you want?
Sure, Vince. I, I'm sure you know where I'm going with everything, so yeah, please, go ahead.
The, 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 the brief history is that some of you, in fact, several of you were on for this application. This was one of the, the, the first buildings on the street, and it's very important to note that there were no variances required, so they met the parking requirement. And there's no, there's no other structure on the street, which is the whole street, that has any prohibition from Saturday or Sunday. What happened at the meeting, we were talking about, you know, shared parking, even though they, they met all the conditions, and the, the board mentioned, well, what about on weekends? And very quickly, there was only a very short discussion, and I don't, it may have even been you, Mike, I don't even remember, someone on the board said, well, are you going to have doctors and everything on the weekend? And we said, we don't have any plan for that, and it became a condition in the resolution. So it, it wasn't, you know, a limpy conversation. There was no variance required. There was no other of the new buildings on the street or any of the old buildings that, that have this requirement. So that's the background. The, the Hamilton Advisory Board reviewed this, and of course, they're, they're extremely supportive of having businesses open on the weekend because it's, it's good for the street, for, you know, for all the known, for all the known reasons, without a doubt. And in my, in my professional opinion, given that there were no variances required, and this was kind of a, like a last minute, it's something the board really needs to correct because it's, it's almost unfair for a building that didn't require any variances to have a prohibition, that other buildings on the street actually receive variances and don't have this condition.
So Vince, that brings, that brings up a good point. Let me, let me just ask you something. So this isn't part of this type of developments restrictions, this isn't part of the Hamilton Street Business District ordinance or development ordinance, zoning ordinance. This was a specific restriction put on for this building at that one particular hearing you're referring to. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, it was. And, and like I said, it was kind of a, it was kind of a quick thing, well, what about this? And I, my guess is because it didn't matter at that time because they didn't have any anticipation of having any medical there, they said, okay, and there was no further discussion on the matter. And like I said, it's very important that there's no other structure on the entire street with variances, new or old, that has this restriction on it. There's nothing in the ordinance, they meet the ordinance requirements for parking.
Okay.
And can I just intervene for one moment?
Sure.
The applicant has voluntarily agreed to keep the condition three A one in the resolution. This one says that the retail spaces on the first floor would not become medical laboratory use.
Okay. I do vaguely remember that discussion being sort of important. Okay, so no medical laboratory use. So, okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ted.
I, I think to say to emphasize no variance required is, is a little bit off the mark because there are actually sixty parking spaces short of what the ordinance requires. The sixty, the sixty places short were met by making a donation to the Township Parking Fund, which, to my knowledge, has never been used for anything. So I think the, the thinking of the board was that physically, they're short of spaces. Doctors, depending on how they operate, can build up a significant amount of parking requirement depending on how quickly they see the patients, how many patients are waiting, or if it's a physical therapy, there might be quite a lot of people there at once having physical therapy. I'm not necessarily opposing the application. I just want to clarify the situation because I think Vince's testimony was a little bit off the mark.
Well, Ted, Ted, it's, it's important to note that the ordinance allows them to do what they did, and there was no variance. They met the ordinance condition. So there was no variance granted. So I, I, I agree with you that they, they had choices. They could do a variety of things. They could have provided parking on the site, or they could have bought it because the Hamilton Street, the ordinance allows, that the, the Planning Board supported, and the Hamilton Board supported the idea that at the current time, there's on-street parking that makes up for that. So I, I wasn't ignoring the fact that they did. I'm saying they met the ordinance requirement, and once again, there's no other struc-, there are other structures down the street, the recon building that could have, and the other one right next door, that can actually have medical offices, and we granted them variances because they did not have enough parking.
And then I just wanted to add for the record that the ordinance is specific for the HBD district, ordinance one twelve dash one oh five. So the parking requirements are very specific, which is why Mr. Dominic is also appearing to speak as to this zone and the purposes of this zone.
Right, I mean, this is, this is just one thing I wanted to make sure of, which you've answered, which is it's not a general requirement of the zone. It wasn't medical uses that were not permitted generally in the zone. It was, and Vince explained it well, so I totally understand that. To Ted's point, I assume that, or whatever businesses that would have been operating on the ground floor, that, you know, the original application, the testimony was there was enough parking for whatever those were anticipated to be. So my other question would be, for the medical uses, and maybe this is for Manu, I'm not sure, would there be any, what would be the hours of operation? Would there be any, any restriction on the hours of operation that we could use to potentially mitigate any parking conflicts? Like, say, during the weekend, people may go, go out of their apartments, visit friends, family, go on trips, do whatever. They come back at night, and, and of course, we don't want to have, you know, operations too, too late that they don't have that parking available, so. Well, usually, a doctor's office on a weekend, you know, hypothetical is taken. You know, nine to five at the most, like, you know, doctors work on Saturday, like, nine to two on Sunday? I would assume that probably an urgent care would maybe be nine to five or nine to six, maybe? Right, yeah, three months. Yeah, occupational or physical therapy, probably much the same. They're, they're generally not going to have evening hours on a weekend. Um, you know, I, I'll leave it up to the board if they feel strongly about any sort of hours of operation that we'd want to restrict it to, after which, you know, the business shouldn't, shouldn't operate. But I just, thank you for that. I just wanted to get that clarity, so that's, that's good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'll go ahead.
Frankly, listening to the previous discussion with Vince and everybody, and thinking back to the original hearing, I honestly think we're on pretty shaky ground putting any restrictions on this applicant that are not on any of the other applicants or the other projects on the street. This sounds to me, as I recall, like, maybe as Vince said, somebody brought up a passing concern at the board meeting, and someone else suggested a condition like this, and these, for Saturday and, no Saturday and Sunday hours, and Mr. Linus just agreed because it wasn't meaningful at that point to his client. But I don't see any purpose for having any of the restriction, eh, either one of the restrictions, either for hours of operation or for Saturday and Sunday hours. Otherwise, it's, you have to come back to what Mr. Dominic said. This is an entirely conforming application. There are no variances. And we have granted variances to other buildings that don't have these restrictions. I would say we're in a, in a pretty shaky situation. I would say we're in a, in a pretty shaky situation if, uh, this applicant wanted to really go a lot further with this. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, thanks, thanks, Bob. And, and so Sheri, uh, here you just got a little, little, and, and it's my fault for asking so many questions, too. A little, little hijacked by the board. I, I, do, do you have any other testimony that you want to cover that we really haven't, haven't discussed? Because then I'll just call for any other board comment, and then we'll open it to the public. Um.
I just wanted to look through my notes. Um, again, during the, the testimony in 2016, there was a traffic report. In preparing for today, I studied the traffic report. And, um, Betsy Dolan was the traffic expert then, and she really analyzed the shared parking concept. So during the day, you know, the, the hours from nine to five or nine to six, some people are hopefully going to be going out now that, you know, the COVID restrictions have, you know, been eased. And I think there's also a lot of people that are going to need the Saturday and Sunday hours because they're going to be back to work. So I just would ask that you seriously consider, um, relief from this one condition, 3A2. And to see if I had any other notes. Um, yes, I was going to bring kinds of economic analysis, but I don't think it adds anything to the discussion, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think, I think that's, that's, I mean, we don't want vacant buildings, and I think Vince is, as Economic Development Director, doesn't want that either. So I think, I think we're, we're, we're clear on that. Um, let me just ask the board, besides Bob and, and Ted, are any other, uh, board comments or questions for either, uh, Manu, or, um, or Sheri or Vince?
Hi, it's me. Just a quick question, and I'm sorry, this is a silly one. I'm assuming with the hours on the weekend, they would be the normal business hours till 10:00 PM, like we've talked about with other businesses, correct?
Um, Mr. Kakar, um, did you want to, I thought that we were looking for from nine to six, or nine to two on Sunday?
Yes.
So we were now looking for nighttime hours. So the commercial use will really stay commercial during the day, but at night, it, you know, the residents should have plenty of parking.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for, for just regulating that for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen, and that was a great question. Um, anyone else? Ted, see your hand up?
I just wanted to comment further that, uh, I was looking at the photographs that were submitted as part of the, as appendix B of the original application, I think. And I took one that showed a, a large part of the parking area, and I counted 31 cars parked there in 20 spaces. So this would imply that there's a good deal of room for more cars to park. And probably even a, oh, a, a physician who makes people wait probably wouldn't have 20 patients sitting waiting. So it, it doesn't look as if it's going to be a problem. I think we're, we're just, we, we don't know. It's, it's not possible to know, you know, given that we don't know who the tenant will be and what their, uh, practice or how fast they process patients would be. It's, it's impossible to know whether there will be a problem. I think the chances are pretty small. And, uh, it, it's just, we don't want to get in a situation where, uh, residents of the building come home and find they can't park there. Uh, they'd probably wind up parking on one of the side streets. So I would, I wouldn't oppose all the requests.
Thanks, thanks, Ted. Any other, uh, board members wishing to speak? If not, I will make a motion to open this hearing to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christine, are open for any comments?
At this time, I still don't see anybody in attendees, but, uh, I do see Sammy on, that I, I didn't see him before. I just had a tech, technical difficulty. Sammy, do you know what time you came in? Just so I can mark it for the recording secretary?
Yeah, I think it was around 7:40-ish.
7:40, okay, that's fine. Okay, uh, no, there's nobody.
Okay, tha- thanks, Christine. I, I'm, I guess this is, uh, such, such a benign hearing. The Franklin reported advocate isn't here. Um, so, um, Pete, Big Nilo, um, Sammy, uh, can he vote on this? He was here at 7:40? I think he heard.
I started the application by the time he got in.
Okay, so he can.
So it had to.
Sorry?
Did I, did I hear an answer?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking you if he can. And, and Sammy, did you, did you hear?
I need to know if the application had started before he got into the meeting. I, I logged onto the meeting just as you were, you were swearing, um, uh, Vincent in. So we had already handled the first witness then. So then he would not be able to because he missed the testimony of the applicant's representative.
Okay.
Okay.
So if he can participate, he just can't vote.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You got it.
Um, all right, seeing no, uh, public comments, I move the meeting to the public be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so, uh, considering everything, I think, you know, Bob has a good point. I, I was, um, sort of maybe leaning towards at least making some sort of hours restriction within this, but I'd, again, think it's probably, if it's not part of the zone, then it's, i- i- and it's unlikely that these uses, uh, medical uses, uh, and no labs, still part of the condition, uh, it, you know, um, it's unlikely to go past five or six, uh, no matter what. So I think I'm going to omit that. So I would, I would just make a motion to approve, um, um, the application as is. Uh, with the medical uses, with the exception of labs, uh, can operate on the weekends?
Oh, second.
Receive if possible.
Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Warren Halk?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Lagnow?
Yes.
Charles Grant?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Timo Marsini?
Yes. Thank you, Sheri. Manu, Vince?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Um, that's all the business we have tonight, so I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Hey, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye, Sheri. Bye-bye.